...today with a very special intent, swearing in our two student representatives. Without further ado, I would like to welcome all of your family members and their teachers, instructors, principals who are here today to witness this amazing event, an opportunity that they have, and sort of their classmates and people are for them. Without further ado, the representatives proceed.
Good afternoon. I count it both an honor and a privilege to be able to issue the oath for both the student representative to the school board and the alternate representative to the school board. The selection process is always a challenge, and so I have to tell you, it's been great getting to know these two young people. So with that, I'd like to call Jalen to the podium, please, standing right over there. As did you raise your right hand? I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia-
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia-
-and that I will faithfully and impartially-
And that I will faithfully and impartially-
-discharge and perform all the duties-
Discharge and perform all the duties-
-incumbent upon me-
Incumbent upon me-
-as the student representative of the school board-
As the student representative of the school board-
-of the city of Norfolk-
Of the city of Norfolk.
-for a term beginning August 1st, 2018-
For a term beginning August 1st, 2018.
-and expiring June 30th, 2019-
And expiring June 30th, 2019.
-according to the best of my ability-
According to my best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Jalen. Thank you. Stand up there with the rest of the board.
I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia-
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
-and that I will faithfully and impartially-
And that I will faithfully and impartially-
-discharge and perform-
Discharge and perform-
-all the duties incumbent upon me-
All the duties incumbent upon me-
-as the student representative alternate of the school board-
As the student representative alternate of the school board.
-of the city of Norfolk-
Of the city of Norfolk.
-for a term beginning August 1st, 2018-
For a term beginning August 1st, 2018.
-and expiring June 30th, 2019-
And expiring June 30th, 2019.
-according to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Catherine.
Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, I do present to you our new student representative to the school board. Anything you'd like to say, you don't feel compelled. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but we want to offer you the opportunity.
I would just like to thank my family, everyone, and everybody who's always been here and doing the talking yet, and all of the board, I definitely believe in the power of the power.
All right, um, thank you to my family, my parents, my mother, my father, my mother, my father, my mother, my father, my mother. And Miss Schaefer, I thank you so much for coming. And everybody else who I forgot to call, thank you, thank you, Dr. I did get to work. Thank you. We could ask the board and the student representatives to come down front so we can do a photo op.
It was certainly a very lovely event. We were really fortunate to have sworn in now several student representatives. First, we had Mr. Torian Espri, and then Mr. Arturo Mendoza, and Andrew, oh gosh, I can't remember Andrew's last name off the top of my head, but all stellar students, wonderful representatives of what Norfolk Public Schools is, and we're very excited to welcome Schaefer and Jalen to the NPS Board as the new student representatives. So without further ado, the next topic that we have for discussion is a discussion on the Student Achievement Data Review. Dr. Boone?
Thank you. Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, as part of our commitment and continued presentation of state assessment data and student achievement, today we're going to look at some more information on our subgroups. We're also going to spend some time focusing on the differences with the ESSA Accountability System, which is the newest name for No Child Left Behind, the federal accountability system. And also with us today, and Dr. Bailey will introduce the folks that are here with us, we have outstanding folks from assessment, research, and accountability, as well as academic affairs, that will be supporting this in terms of the presentation, in terms of the practices that we're undertaking to move the needle on student achievement. So with that, I turn it over to Dr. Bailey.
Thank you, Dr. Boone, and good evening, Dr. Gabriella and members of the board. As Dr. Boone mentioned, there are individuals here for curriculum and instruction, and from my department, assessment, research, and accountability. Certainly, Ms. Kristin McGarrett and Mr. Dennis Fuddy are here to support in any discussions that we may have. We've talked a lot about the numbers and whatnot, and so we're at a point where we want to hear more about what are we doing in response to the numbers. We've heard the stories from the field, and so we've talked a little bit also about pass rates, combined rates, and so forth. And so today... Okay, there you go. I just wanted to briefly share with you, as we talk about pass rates, there's several different types of pass rates. So, for example, we have the pass rate that is according to the federal ESSA guidelines, which is according to the federal accountability guidelines, and these are some of the adjustments that are allowed. So moving forward to the state accreditation pass rate, old methodology, these are some of the adjustments that are allowed in that particular calculation. And then with the state accreditation pass rate new, we have even more adjustments to include growth. And what we had established in our discussion last school board meeting was that growth was important. It was important to look at that as a part of looking at all students and how we are doing. And so this information has been shared with all of our schools earlier in the summer, and they have created plans moving into this school year. Looking at our achievement gaps, I know that in the last presentation, it was indicated that the achievement gap label that was a part of the new accreditation was somewhat confusing. So I thought it would be interesting to show it to you in this type of graph so that you could see how we're trending over time. We have two different types of subgroups. One subgroup is ethnicity and race, which is what you see here. A little bit more about the gaps. We have the black-white gap in 2015-16 at 21 percent, and then the next two gaps. And so you can see that there's very little change in our gap. And so our gap pass rates or our gap difference is flat. We're roughly 21 to 23 percent over time. Looking at the other set of subgroups, economically disadvantaged are gifted learners, English-language learners, military-connected, and students with disabilities. You can see how they're performing over time.
And if I can insert on that prior slide, the gifted learners are part of our accountability system. The school board has asked us to monitor the performance of our gifted learners. The state does not, so that's what wanted to highlight the difference. You'll see military, English-language learners and those subgroups, but as a district, we have also included monitoring and paying close attention to our gifted learners also.
So I wanted to pull out at least one subgroup from this group, economically disadvantaged and non-disadvantaged, so that you could see that the gaps that may exist there. And so we have gaps over the time period from 18 to 17 to 18. Here again, the gaps are flat. We still have a gap, and the performance is rather flat. Looking at math, and I'm sorry I have this as SOA adjusted, but basically it's the state accreditation combined rate. Broken out in the same manner are ethnicity and race categories. Our gap group, 21 percent, 21 percent to 24 percent. And so you can see our gap widened just a little bit between African-American students and white students. Our other subgroups, you can see the performance over time. Everyone is kind of trending in the same direction, and I think that when we shared with you this information last month, we indicated that we did have a slight decline in math. Math gaps, 16 percent to 18 percent. And so here again, it's relatively flat, with both groups showing a decline. And so at this point, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Cataldo, who will talk more about the curriculum instruction department and what they are doing.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Boone, and members of the board. Today, my team will be providing you with an academic update in the areas of English and mathematics. First, I would like to introduce two senior coordinators that are here with me that will be presenting today. First, I have Gwen Collins, who is senior coordinator of English, and second, I have Rhonda White, who is senior coordinator of mathematics. And at this point, Gwen is going to continue.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to say first that English department, our goal is to make sure that we ensure that our students are proficient readers and writers, so that they can become productive citizens. And when we think of our, my team thinks about that, we think that everything that we do should follow our brand of strategic, authentic, and engaged, and then our Read 14.2 initiative that we put in place three, two years ago. And so when we think about what is strategic, what does that actually mean to our teachers and to our students? It's that we have a balanced literacy program where reading and writing are taught daily with a gradual release process. And what gradual release, all that really means is that the teacher does, the students do together, and then the student actually ends up doing that on their own. And that we have a clear and focused curriculum. We're very strategic in how we roll out our curriculum, how we've built our pacing guides, how we work with our teachers around our curriculum, and that all of our instructional strategies are research-based. And one of the things that's helped us with that is our literacy model that really outlines those instructional strategies. And then authentic, what does authentic mean in the world of literacy? That means that reading and writing should be personally meaningful to our students, that our students should be given real-world application of reading and writing and research, and that our students should be engaged with authentic texts. And authentic texts are real books, novels, they could be a recipe, a flyer, a map, primary sources, but actually real text. And then engaged, we want all of our students to be engaged, but one of the things that we've found over the last few years is, what does that mean in an English classroom? And I think one of the hardest things for people to think about, and we always talk to teachers about this, is that reading and writing are not passive. So they might look passive when the students are quiet, but they're actually active things. And I love the thought that reading and writing are not spectator sports. You have to actually join in that sport to become better at it, and that's what we want our students to do. And I talk to administrators and teachers about, in your classroom, you should look around your room and think, who is reading, who's writing? Are they talking about what they're reading and writing? And that's really engagement in literacy. And so this year, we have, well, actually, they rolled out last year in 2017, our new English standards. So we went from the 2010 standards to the 2017 standards. And really, the big changes with those are organization. They're set up a little bit differently. Before, the 2010 standards were aligned K3 and then 412, and there's now a K12 alignment with those standards. And they're broken into four strands, so communication and multimodal literacy. And all multimodal means is this presentation here is multimodal. You have a visual and you have an oral that are going on at the same time about that topic. And we want our students to be able to know how to have discussions with each other, know how to collaborate with each other, and to be able to prepare presentations just like this one. And then the next two strands are reading and writing, and it's, to its basic core, it is that in reading, the student will read. And so that goes back to that idea that we need to engage our students. You don't become a better reader or a better writer just watching other people do those tasks. You have to be engaged in those and do those yourself. And then the research strand is just that can our students question? Do they know how to access information? And can they take all that information and create a product from it? And so when you think of that product, it goes right back up to that multimodal idea of can they put together some kind of multimodal project that they could then share with others? And, oh, thanks. No, you're good, Sharon. And so this is the timeline of how we're rolling our standards out and that what we, what the English department, and when I say English department, I include, there's three of us in the English department, and we could not do this work alone. So we have 29 reading specialists and 17 department chairs that help us, along with master teachers that are out in the field and in classrooms that help us build curriculum, build our pacing guides. In 2016, we took our pacing for K8 and completely revamped the pacing to include units of across genres. So our old pacing would be, if this is a nonfiction unit, we're only going to read nonfiction text. Or this is a novel unit, we're just going to read a novel. Now what we've done is we've, say, built a unit across, building character, so that might be the unit in sixth grade, across that unit, you're going to read fiction, nonfiction. You might have, there might be poetry within that unit all around that same theme. So it's just like in the real world. We don't only read nonfiction for two weeks and then move to read fiction. We actually are reading different types of text all the time, and that goes directly with how the new standards are laid out. And then another focus in K8 is comprehension strategies. If we don't teach our students comprehension strategies, they will not become better readers. They need a tool belt to make meaning of text when they're doing that independently on their own. Somebody asked, I was in a meeting the other day, and I had just thought, what are our kids doing when they go to read and write by themselves? Do they know what to do? Do they have to have someone with them? Because we're fostering independence. We want our kids to become readers and writers. And so to be able to roll out these standards, last year, we rolled out the new pacing guides, K8, so all of the teachers started with those. We had great success. We got feedback at the end of the year, and we've revised them this summer. And then with reading specialists and department chairs, we started doing the work of looking at the new standards. And the 2003 standards to the 2010 standards, they were much more comprehensive in their changes. The 2010 to 17 standards are not as comprehensive. It's really organizational, and so it might be that 6.4A is now 6.4E, and one word, it's changed. And so, but we're making sure that our reading specialist, department chairs have unwrapped those standards, they know what's in the standards, so that they can best support their teachers in the schools. And so we spent a lot, every meeting, we meet monthly with specialists and department chairs, we spent looking at the new standards, looking at the crosswalk, looking at the changes to those standards, developing resources for our teachers. And the curriculum framework was just approved in January of 2018, so we've really done a lot of work with that since, in less than a year. And so this school year, this is what we call the crosswalk year, which gets kind of a little muddy and confusing a little bit, but what it really means is we're crossing over from the 2010 standards to the 2017 standards. And the VDOE, when the standards first rolled out, they said just jump in because the standards have not changed that greatly, that you wouldn't be able to just stop reading and writing or reading and writing and research. And so in K8, our pacing is, we are implementing the 2017 standards. We have flipped those pacing guides to include 2017 standards. Anything that we have found that might be different from the 2010 standards, because that's what's going to be tested at the end of the year, and that's where it gets a little muddy, we've made sure that that is on our pacing guide. And the biggest one that sticks out is in third grade. In 2010, our students need to know guide words. And as we all know, think of the last time you used guide words. So in the 2017 standards, those are no longer there, but we still have to ensure that our teachers are instructing on guide words in our third-grade classrooms because that will come up on this year's SOL test. And so in grades nine through 12, we worked this summer, we had teams from every high school that worked on rebuilding our units to match the K8 unit, so it's now across genres. And we're, and so those were just rolled out this year. Those have the 2010 standards on them, and we're embedding the 2017 standards in those. This fall will be the first VDOE English institute on the 2017 standards. We have representatives from elementary, middle, and high school attending that. It's actually October 11th, and that's where the teachers will actually start to dig into those standards, understand the changes, and then be able to bring those modules back to teachers in their buildings and across the district. And all of our teachers have crosswalk documents and resources, and we have been really focusing on grade-specific planning on the new standards so teachers can understand what the differences are between the two. And then in 2019, 2020 will be the full implementation of the new K12 standards. Then those standards will be tested in the spring of 2020, which used to seem like light years away, but 2020, it's... And so, you know, thinking about all these changes and then the idea of us, you know, we always take it back to everything we do is strategic, authentic, and engaged, and so our professional development is that as well. And we focus our PD around, it's either focusing on curriculum, focusing on instruction, or focusing on assessment. And so when we think of that, we think of the alignment of the written, taught, and tested curriculum. And so curriculum, the written curriculum would be lesson plans, the pacing documents, the curriculum framework. The instruction is that live teacher in the classroom actually doing the instruction and implementing that lesson plan, and the assessment is the tested piece. So how are we going to test that standard to make sure that it loops back and is aligned to the written, and then what's actually taught in our classrooms? And so this just gives you an idea of some of the things that we've had going on. For curriculum, this summer during our Professional Learning Day, we have a planning protocol, CNI, the four, we refer to ourselves, it's the four core. It's reading, math, science, and history. And we have developed a planning protocol for our schools to use to help them to know what do we bring to planning, what do we do when we're in planning, what kinds of questions should we be asking each other? And so this summer at our Professional Learning Day, we simulated planning for all of our secondary team leaders. And so we had a live planning session, and then the team sat around, observed that planning session, asked questions, and then they left that session and went and worked with their teams to plan Unit 1 of Quarter 1 with their teachers. And along with that, we're going to continue the work of unpacking the 2017 standards to make sure that we're thinking about that written and taught and tested curriculum. My department offers building-based, grade-level planning on a daily basis to different schools, the schools that we find that we need to support the most. And so that's how we, you know, work with that curriculum piece. And then in instruction, this summer in 2018, we had a literacy conference that, we had 300 teachers attend a two-day literacy conference that was pre-K12 across content. There were art teachers there, there were history teachers, math teachers. Teachers came for two full days in the summer without compensation, and we had 300 people there. So it was a pretty, but that conference focused on explicit instruction. So what is gradual release? What does that look like in your classroom so we can foster that independence in our students? Comprehension strategies, those can be used across content. It's not just something that should happen in the English classroom. And then vocabulary instruction, again, vocabulary is important to all content areas. And so, you know, having good tools and strategies that teachers can use in all of our content is, you know, things that we want to be happening in our classrooms. And then over the summer, we began analyzing the English data, and one of the things that we found were that the top three things that bubble up from our SOL test, if you will, from third grade to 11th grade, the same three types of questions bubble up as something that we're working on. And so all three of them are comprehension strategies. And so we now have our, this is really something that we're going to be focusing on this year with, the first one is drawing conclusions and making inferences. It's a higher-level skill. And it's, you know, we expect our students to sit in front of an SOL test, independently read six passages where they have to do- read six passages where they have to do that with all those different genres. So we're hoping all these changes that we're making will give them the tools to be able to do that. And then determining importance, you can't get to probably half of our reading SOLs without being able to determine importance in what you're reading. And then vocabulary, and one of the hardest things for our students is using context to determine meaning of unknown words. And so that, I take that back to read fourteen point two. That's a way for us to build vocabulary because the more our students read, the more words they see. And so that builds background knowledge. We, as a department, have replicable PD for our reading specialist and department chairs on a monthly basis that they can take back to their schools and provide for, for their teachers in their buildings. And today was the first day of our, I don't know, third, fourth year of guided reading training. And we had, we are in a phase, for those of you that, you know, are new. We began in two thousand sixteen to build consistency across the district with guided reading. We trained four hundred and fifty teachers in probably a four month timeframe. And we have now layered that in to where we are just, we're giving that same training to all new teachers, long-term subs, special education teachers. And so today we started that with twenty five teachers. Along with that, we have coaching going on in the buildings that goes right with that as well. In fact, I had a coach in the school district pre-service week and we looked at our schools and determined where is the biggest need that we have the most new teachers or long-term subs? And that's where the coach went so that she could help them put their classroom together, get the routines and procedures straight for what should be happening that first day of school. And then as far as assessment goes, we use the Atlas Data Protocol, which is a research-based way to look, to analyze data and to respond to it. Because we can analyze it all day long, but we have to respond to what it's telling us. And so some of our data that we look at, SOL data, STAR data, our district benchmarks and then formative assessments. And so that's really looking at student work individually when you start looking at formative assessments in literacy. Another piece that we have layered in that's come from qualitative data, just from us doing observations and walkthroughs in schools is that our K two teachers need to have a firm grasp on our K two assessments because assessing doesn't start in third grade. We have literacy assessments that start in K two because we need, our second graders should be walking into third grade, reading as close to grade level as we can get them. And so we've developed some literacy assessment one-on-ones for our teachers to be able to understand, how do I give a developmental reading assessment? How do I then analyze this data? And then how do I take it to instruction to my reading groups? And then at the bottom of that, one of the literacy model is really built around this whole idea of the stages of literacy development. And it takes it back to thinking about our subgroups and how we can help those students achieve, is really thinking about where are our students in stages of literacy? And when, when I think of that, it's actually reading, writing and word study. And there's diets, if you will, a diet for an emergent reader and writer and what they need and what we should be doing for them. And so we're doing a lot of work around that discussion with our teachers. And that goes along with that whole guided reading training that we're doing.
Okay.
I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Cataldo.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Well, an important part of what we do, especially in English and in mathematics, as you see many of the changes and we're going to be talking about some additional things when Ms. White speaks. An important part of that is having a very strong team and having that strong support. So I'm going to talk with you a little bit about how we have introduced a framework to ensure that we are reading and math specialists that are in the buildings are providing our teachers with consistent instruction and consistent feedback. So if you look up, so basically talking about the reading and math specialist design. So the whole design, the whole focus was really to have a unified vision. We wanted to have a unified vision in math specialists and in English specialists. We wanted consistency within the division. We also needed a focus on tier one instruction through professional development, through coaching, through planning. We also needed a way to provide aligned lesson activities and strategies to teachers that are really at all the levels and monitor alignment of the taught curriculum during classroom observations. And also work with principals and the senior coordinators. So we have one senior coordinator for English and we have two teacher specialists. But within the buildings, we have multiple reading and math specialists that can provide that additional support. So as we train them up here, they pass that information and knowledge on. They build the capacity of their teachers within their school, which translates into students doing better. So they're working with principals. So the way we approached this, we looked at four main areas, four main focus areas. First is modeling, coaching and feedback. So what kind of modeling, what kind of coaching are they doing and what kind of feedback are they providing? The second thing was how are they assisting school, assisting schools with grade level planning? Because that's a big part of it too. It's not just the coaching and modeling and feedback, but it's also that grade level planning and getting lesson plans together and keeping with the pacing guides. And then another part that reading and math specialists do is they work with our students too. So they work with teachers and they also work with students. So we wanted to, to really organize that and put that in a framework as well. And then the last part, which I think Ms. Collins had mentioned, was our monthly specialist meetings. So each month we meet with the English and the math specialists to, again, do professional development. We have them for a whole day. We go through multiple areas. We build their capacity so then they can transfer that into the school. So it's really a position of trying to transfer the capacity from one level to the next. So for each of these areas, what I've done is we've looked through and they can be, they're focusing on the duties and expectation of the modeling, the, the quantity, the quantifying of the work, excuse me. And then finally, how we kind of monitor that at the very end. So if we see there, if we look at our duties and expectations, the, the duties and expectations of the modeling and the coaching and the feedback, the main purpose is again to build that capacity for tier one. It's also a priority to work with new teachers and long-term substitutes. We provided a lot of support this past year as we've had an increased number of long-term substitutes. We provided them with the same level of support that we're providing our first year and teachers that need additional assistance. And that has really proved to be very beneficial. We've also had the priority of new teachers and people requiring growth. And then also specialists, they build a coaching plan within the school for identified teachers that need additional assistance. So that's kind of in the modeling, coaching and feedback part. That's what the reading and math specialists need to be doing. If we look at the next level area under duties and expectations of the grade level planning days, the main purpose is to, for specialists to offer teachers aligned activities and strategies, to provide assistance with aligning lesson plans and also unwrapping the standards as they get additional updates and information from their monthly meetings. And also provide assistance with formative assessments and data analysis. So again, that's the grade level planning, a duty and expectation for the reading and math specialists. If we look at the student groups, again, as a form of their duties and expectations, schools that have a dedicated specialist will use them to work with identified students. And we're going to talk a little bit about how they work with those identified students and what percent of their day that they use working and working with those students specifically. And then the last part is the specialist meeting. The duties and expectations of specialists there is they meet with senior coordinators, they get monthly professional development, they get updates, they review data, they develop activities and strategies together, they build the capacity within themselves. Because I think we have twenty, what, twenty-nine reading specialists and fourteen of them have less than three years of experience in that position. So we are working to build their capacity and get them to a point where they are being able, they're able to have that knowledge and be able to transfer it within the schools. Develop activities, review data, they do review data, they identify needs within the school. And also the expectation is for them to share the information that they receive at their specialist meetings with the principal and with the staff as well. Oh yeah, yeah, one more. Thank you. Guess I have it right here, huh? So if we look at quantifying the work, so the first part we were looking at primarily is looking at modeling and coaching, but we looked at duties and expectations, but now we're looking at quantifying the work. How do we quantify the work when we're talking about modeling, coaching and feedback? Well, the specialists submit logs. They include next steps in their logs and those are reviewed by the senior coordinators as well as teacher specialists. They, they also get feedback from administrators on observed lessons. So as administrators provide that feedback to them. So that's how we kind of quantify that work. For grade level planning, we quantify the work because they have quarterly grade level planning logs. So as they plan with their, within their schools, they submit those logs. Also provide them with informal feedback from teachers on lessons that support, receive, the support that they receive. And then as well as growth on student performance data within the building. And then if we look at student groups, when they're working with student groups, we ask them to have a weekly log of student groups, focus groups and what they were doing. And again, next steps I think are always very key and important. And then we look at the last part there. And in the specialist meetings, we ask them to work with senior coordinators, provide quarterly updates. We take attendance, participation, all those things. We have professional development for the specialists and we do upload that on to Google Drive. So they have access to all of that. So we take attendance and sometimes they're not there because something else, someone's sick. They have access to that information and they're able to get that right on the spot. So we're really trying to move very electronic as well. Last piece is monitoring. So with this position, if you look at quarter one, the first part of the year, we would expect the reading and math specialist to be working with the teachers, modeling, coaching and planning about eighty percent of their day. And then they would be working with student groups about twenty percent. What we want to do is we want to build the capacity of the teachers very early in the beginning of the year, really get them where they need to be at the beginning of the year, spend most of our time doing that coaching. As we do that, we can gradually, gradually release that level of support. And then it becomes a sixty forty, then a forty sixty. And then at the end of the year, as we're getting, we're kind of tying up to that year, the teacher has that built capacity. Now we're working with individual students that are probably tier two, tier three, need additional assistance. So we're really working that tier one instruction, quarter one, eighty percent, and moving down to assist students. Now, this is an overall design, but if a school requires, you know, sixty forty at the beginning of the year or if they need to continue maybe with an eighty twenty because they have very new teachers, they have a lot of long-term subs, you know, if you have a lot of new teachers and long-term subs, you're going to spend more time modeling, coaching and planning with them than you're going to be pulling student groups. Because when you pull student groups, you're working with just those students. When you work with a teacher, you're working with hundreds of kids, you work with a grade level, that's a whole school. So we try to enforce that piece, but again, it, it works on the building. So principals sometimes come to us and say, you know, we have some modifications, this is why, and we provide guidance and things on that. But that's what we do. That, the reading and math specialist is such a key, critical position because what it's doing is it's getting the information we have up here and it's really transferring that. They're in the buildings, they're working with teachers and students, they're the frontline there. And, and we support them and they support their teachers. So we, we think it's, it's been working really well. This is the third year that we are on this redesign. And I think the next part will be Ms. White and she will be talking about mathematics.
Thank you. So as Dr. Cataldo and as Gwen stated earlier, our work is definitely only made possible by the support of the buildings and having those specialists in buildings. Our job as a math department is to move our students to be mathematicians. And creating this community of mathematicians will require some culture shifts. We realize that everyone doesn't walk around thinking that they're math people. But that's a part of what we have to shift. And so we have to begin that with our pre-K students, building that self-efficacy that yes, you can do this and there is a thing called a power of yet. And so as we're building that with our students, we have to be very mindful of their needs. The NPS math department, we advocate for high quality teaching and instruction every day for every student to build this mathematical literacy. And this graphic that's right below that, it displays the Virginia Math Five Process Goals. These are the overarching ideas of all Virginia mathematics, no matter if your student is in kindergarten or calculus. We are trying to deepen their understanding and respect for mathematics by helping them to problem solve, to make connections, to communicate their thinking, to show their thinking in a variety of representations and to reason. These are skills that will carry them into their adulthood, no matter what pathway they choose and definitely will be gatekeepers to be them being productive citizens. So our department also, we really own and we honor the theory of action. And as we move forward, we definitely look to align, increase our alignment even more of the rigorous curriculum that VDOE has set upon us with the two thousand sixteen standards. And also looking at the research of our National Community Council of Teachers of Mathematics, constantly being engaged with the newest and the best practices and research. We also are right in alignment with our partners in literacy and looking at how we can use the strengths from literacy to help in mathematics, but also to build especially in pre-K through second grade, that early numeracy. There's research that shows if students really own that early numeracy, that they will go on to the higher maths. And that's what we want for our students, to open those doors for them. The innovative piece, while we immediately think of STEM, but I, I beg you to think also, think of STEAM, pulling in the arts because we can be creative with our mathematics and engage our students in all of these ways as well. Pulling in history, there are ways to use mathematics and history. So we want to be innovative in our instruction and to look cross-curricular with those connections. And finally, I know you've heard of the growth mindset. Last year, our department chairs and our math specialists, we did a book talk on a book by a researcher named Joe Bowler, which is on mathematical growth mindsets. Again, thinking about those mistakes that you make, learning from those and growing from those. So we want our teachers, but we also want our students to have this mathematical growth mindset. So our focus as we move into this year has to be implementing the two, two thousand sixteen new standards in the written, taught and assessed curriculum. We want our resources, we want our actions, we want everything that we do to align to our new two thousand sixteen standards. The written again being the lesson plans, the curriculum, the taught being the actual live instruction that goes on. And any form of assessments needs to be aligned to the two thousand sixteen standards. And we do have twenty-five math specialists that help support this important work in our elementary schools and eighteen department chairs. Of the twenty-five math specialists, seven have three to five years of experience and six are brand new. So we have a mentor program for them in which we have them paired up with a more experienced and more veteran math specialist. And we also go in and work with them to help them and shadow so that they can actually learn how to do this important work. And when we're talking about the work of them, the unpacking, thinking about the rigor of the standards, thinking about the depth of knowledge of the standards, thinking about how this also affects your instruction during your planning, discussing these ideas, during the coaching, thinking about assessments. And finally, that data analysis piece, that we can't stop there, but we have to really think about how we move from what we see in the data. Now with the two thousand sixteen standards, and we'll talk a bit about how they have changed in just a second, you'll find though, when you look at them, that it's not just skill-driven, it's a lot of application. So we have to look at how our instruction is delivered. And for this reason, we're looking at a more responsive model called the math workshop model, especially in elementary school. But we're also engaging our secondary classroom teachers in thinking about how can we refine our time that we spend with our students? How can we be more intentional with every minute of our math block? So that we include that important time for not just review and a focus lesson, but also for intervention and enrichment. So just to share a little bit more about the changes. So just to share a little bit more about the changes, during the 2017, 2018 school year last year, we were given special permission for our kindergarten through second-grade students to fully implement the 2016 standards. The rest of Virginia were actually on a crosswalk year. And as Gwen stated earlier, that means that they were teaching the 2009 and the 2016 standards, or they were expected to teach bits of the two thousand, uh, bits of the 2016 and the 2009 standards, because at the end of the year, they would be assessed on the 2009 standards. So the data that we're looking at in math is from the 2009 standards. The 2018, 2019 school year is our first year of full implementation for the new 2016 math standards. I know it's confusing, it's called 2016, but that's when it was formally approved. The 2016 standards will now be from kindergarten all the way through our courses. This school year, in the spring, will be the first time that our students from third grade through the end of course, and when I say end of course, I'm meaning algebra, geometry, and Algebra II, they will be assessed for the first time using the 2016 standards, on the 2016 standards. So as with any changes in curriculum, we want to be proactive. So we began in the fall of 2016, attending institutes, my office, myself, and two teacher specialists, as well as representatives from elementary, middle, and high schools, we attended VDOE institutes that really, really went into the new progressions, which are definitely better. The more appropriate, developmentally appropriate skills are now in place, some have been deleted, so we went a lot into depth of which ones are deleted, of any additions, of any parameter changes. We were able to speak that, so that in the spring of 2017, we came back and we shared that with our math specialists and our department chairs. On VDOE, there are still crosswalk documents, and we live in those documents, and we encourage teachers to pull them out when planning, the crosswalk documents that really go into detail what's changed, what's deleted, what's added, the changes within, because some things just shifted from one standard to another, but these are the small, minute changes that in the end, if we don't pay attention to, we will suffer. So we don't want that to happen. In August of 2017, the PD training, again, included those documents, but this time it was for teachers. So we wanted to layer that, so that we're building capacity along the way. 2017, 2018 school year, we had a pacing guide, we called a crosswalk pacing guide, in which it was based on the 2009 standards, because that's what they would be assessed on for grades three through the end of course. For K through two, they went with the full 2016 standards. But for those grade levels, we also included pieces of the 2016 standards as appropriate. So if they were doing something with place value, instead of going to the hundred thousands place, if we knew that this year they would be moving on to a higher place, we began to interject that, or we put it in red, so that they would see, this will not be assessed this year, but this is just to expose your students and you and your instruction to the new standards. The 2017, 2018 year, we also began to work in plannings, we had our teachers really thinking about, okay, well, this year we are comparing fractions only to this denominator, next year, this will change, how might this change? How might this look next year? So during planning time, we started those conversations, so that they could begin to really, okay, this is going to have to, we're going to have to make some shifts here. But as we're making these shifts, if we have struggles, we know that we can rely on our math specialists and our math department to help us through this. So we were trying to open that door and introduce that to them early enough, they can start to grapple with it. And this past August, our grade-specific PD, during our professional learning day, we were all into 2016, and the focus of those sessions were to look at the upcoming content for quarter one. So we would, we unpacked, we talked about the activities, we shared strategies, we shared resources, we did a lot of planning with the teachers for the upcoming content, immediate upcoming content. Now to share just a bit more about math workshop. And when you look at the circle, the icon that has the different components, it just looks like good instruction. But we know that in some classrooms, sometimes it becomes the lecture. And we can look at our gap groups, and we can begin to ask questions. One of the things that often comes up is that it's not engaging. So one thing that I really appreciate about the math workshop model is that it offers the opportunity to engage some of our populations that we may not otherwise engage. So the number sense routines, for examples, if we begin a lesson in this way, first of all, we're beginning to build what we call a math community, in which we all have a voice. Every single one of us has a math identity, and once you own that, then you are able to persevere through the harder task. Once you own that, you're able to understand that you are going to struggle, but with the correct support, you'll be able to be successful. So this whole sense, this number sense routine, it looks different in kindergarten than it does in eighth grade. However, if we're building our community, beginning with this common type of understanding of how do we look at patterns, how do we begin to solve problems, then that's increasing that bit of self-efficacy for our students. We can move into, on some days, the focus lesson, which is just an aligned tier-one piece of instruction, and that's really what we're heavy, trying to align our tier-one instruction, so that we have fewer students that are struggling on the other side. We're thinking about in our guided math section, how can we scaffold that thinking to a small group of students? How can we think about the prerequisites that they need in place, that we may need to step back, use more concrete manipulatives? We may, we may need to step back and present it in a different way to a smaller group. So this is really the part that's based on student needs. The learning stations also was very responsive, and in this way, we can build in some time for technology applications, but again, it's data-driven, and we're having a chance here to intervene for those students, especially, we have this conversation in secondary a lot, how do we fit that into our block? We may need to do some small groups, some learning stations, so that we can intervene in a timely manner throughout the school year, and also offer a chance for enrichment for the students that need to move beyond. And finally, ending the lesson, or ending your instruction with a point for reflection. Where are we now? Let's talk about our growth each day. Let's acknowledge that we had goals for this lesson, and let's, let's acknowledge where we are. So it's building that goal-setting within your math block. And finally, the task and share, because we want to also really push the practical problem-solving throughout the units, not just at the end of a unit, and not just as an assessment, but actually as a way to learn. Let's present real-world, practical problems and apply our skills along the way. So that's what math workshop is all about. Professional development has, and will include not just unpacking, using the verbs and nouns as we sometimes used to do, but it definitely includes a deeper look into what's the rigor of, of the standard, what might the standard look like as it's assessed? We have a VDOE protocol that we borrowed, and we actually have it in our core curriculum protocol. And I love the fact that this not only encourages teachers to, for every portion of their standard, think about the vocabulary that's involved, but also to think about the prerequisites, the progression of skills, so what might be lacking, and what might you need to go back and intervene with. I also enjoy the fact that we can, at this point, begin to talk about misconceptions. For a brand-new teacher, they may not be able to brainstorm misconceptions for a standard, but this protocol has them thinking about, what are the protocols? And someone at that table, and hopefully the math specialist is at that table, can intervene and say, you know, usually when they're doing this, they forget what that one of there stands for. So this is where you may need to back up, pull out your base ten blocks. And so they can then begin to think about those misconceptions that students have, and immediately begin to help the teachers understand, what's that second question to ask? What's that third question? What's that other way to teach this? So we're building capacity through this protocol. The building-based planning, of course, the specialists are there, our office, we attend many of those, especially in the more struggling schools. But last year, we also began to organize study groups, and we call them mentor sessions, because the teachers were the leaders. These leaders, we, we looked at data, we looked at benchmark data occasionally, we looked, whatever was most current, if it was the SOL, the beginning of the year, we used that, but as we started to have benchmarks, we used those. We had those teachers leading, because they could give the most practical, real-time, this is what I did to help my students. Now, I'm going to share with you, colleagues, and they begin to network. And a few of them commented to me later, you know, this one person is wearing me out, and all I could say was, thank you, because you are making yourself available, and we appreciate that. But the bigger idea here was that they were able to really share with the teachers, the unpacking part that they would get at their school anyway, these were held after-school hours, they were volunteering to come. We really, though, wanted to target not just the new teachers, but also some of the long-term substitute teachers who didn't necessarily have the background knowledge to really be able to dig in. We additionally wanted, and we will continue to invite the teachers who were our spare teachers. They collaborated with our teachers in the classroom, and they collaborate during planning, but this was another opportunity for them to come, hear the information from a teacher who has been able to help her students or his students show growth, and then discuss, well, what other kind of specially-designed instruction can I actually have for my students, plan for my students, using what you also have done in your classroom? So it was very collaborative. We want to continue that, especially for our middle and high school teachers. But as far as instruction, the PD will obviously include the math workshop model this summer. We had one of the authors of a math solutions book, the company Math Solutions, the book is called Five Steps to Implementing Math Workshop. Her name is Jennifer Limp, and she actually came and did PD for our teachers, and principals, actually, a few principals actually came, and they want her to come back. What they did at the, at that PD was to really share what the math workshop model was about, but she also, she did a really great job of just scaffolding how you can build this into your classroom, and how number sense routines can support not just third-grade mathematics, but also sixth and seventh and eighth-grade mathematics. So it was a really great day. We invited five, up to five, teachers from each school in order to have them be teacher leaders when they return to their schools in the fall. So we'll follow up on that work with them. And when we look across our SOL data from the spring, remember, these were the 2009 standards, however, some of these skills are definitely still present in our 2016 standards. We saw a need to increase our focus on fractions. Now, beginning with fractions, the basic skills, as they were assessed in third grade, just looking at how to identify and name fractions and mixed numbers, but going all the way through middle school, when they begin to look at how fractions interact with other rational numbers. We need to do a better job, and we will increase how we are working with those with our, not during our, during our study groups, but also looking at our resources and how we need to increase those. Additionally, the second bullet talks about practical, single, and multi-step problems, basically problem-solving, but the state calls them practical problems now, and we're looking at if a student is sitting at a test or in the real world, how do they approach a problem? And we have a problem-solving plan, so we need to refine possibly, and definitely think about how the students are utilizing that problem-solving plan. Again, that just goes back to that whole point of it can't just be skills. Great, you can multiply, great, you can divide, but can you apply that in a real-world, practical setting? So we need to make sure that our instruction is allowing them opportunities to do that. And finally, that last bullet, because there were so many, there were some drops, and we recognized those, so we are working with buildings at their building level to decide, okay, what are the next steps? And what are some strategies that we can have in place for you in each of these buildings? And finally, in terms of PD with assessment, you know, it's, it's a great thing to give a teacher an assessment that's aligned, but it's even better if they can create those types of questions, because that means that they have been able to unpack that curriculum, which is what we want with our new standards. They have been able to think about what levels do we need to assess on, they've been able to think about, all right, well, this might be a basic level, but this would be a higher level, and then their instruction will then improve, because they will learn, I need to scaffold my instruction to be able, for my students to be able to meet the needs of this assessment. Their questioning will improve when we're, as we're doing this as well, and this is not a separate, this is embedded into planning, this is embedded into our study groups, so it's not a separate something. At our ABC meetings that we had last year, and I know will continue this year, one thing that I found very effective, and Gwen, you might agree with me, as we were sharing our data, if I had an issue or I saw some, some gleaming things at certain schools or in certain parts of content, you may also have seen those things. So we could begin to brainstorm, well, how can we combine efforts? And how can I use, for example, some things from literacy? Or I can say, drawing conclusions was a problem, maybe that's why we're having such a problem when we're looking at problem-solving and reasoning. So we begin to have those conversations. We want our schools to have those same conversations. And as we are training our specialists, we are having them to look. Don't just look at your math data, look at your reading data as well, and see if you can make some connections there, because if you have students that are reading at this grade level, maybe that is a problem with your assessment. Thankfully, our assessments are moving to the universal design, so the, the vocabulary should, that should ease for us a bit. And finally, using the Atlas Data Protocol, we use this with our specialists, we look at the district data, we actually had, I, we did this yesterday with our department chairs, we had them looking at their data, not just by content, but across content, looking at the school-level data, but then talking about how to triangulate that with your STAR data, because STAR has a beautiful, few reports that will give you prerequisite skills, so then you can then begin to fill in the gaps, so that if a student is in seventh grade, but they had certain issues in sixth grade, you know those issues are still going to be present, so you have, first of all, got to look back at your cohort data to fill those gaps. But then, as you're looking at STAR, if you still are seeing those gaps, then we've got to do something differently for that child. So it's getting down to the student need, and that's what we're working with our specialists to be able to do at, at their, at our meetings, that's what we do at our meetings. And then the district benchmarks, as they come up, of course, we are looking at them, but we are working with principals when they come to our content core rotations, we're looking at those, and individually making plans for schools. I remember after a few of those rotations last year, I was in a building the next day delivering PD. So it was, it definitely was responsive to their needs, but it was because we were looking at data in a different way. We're looking at it for glows and grows, but then what do we do next? And that's the piece that we don't want to be missing. And finally, this formative assessment, because we know that if we put another test in front of some children, they are just, that is it for them. So we have to recognize, and we want our specialists and our teachers to recognize that you can gleam a lot from what a child understands and can do from a variety of forms of assessment. Anything that can inform your instruction, we want to present to students, and this is formative in assessment. Unit assessments are great, and they can become, they can be at the end of a unit, some people put units together, and they call them CFA, so they'll do them mid-semester, mid-quarter. But the daily look, at the end of your math lesson, can you look at the work that your students have turned in? Can you look at this quick exit ticket? Can you look at a graphic organizer? Can you look at their student work and say, my students were able to meet the goals that we had for today? Or on the continuum of understanding, where are they, and what do I need to do next? So that's more important than just at the end, looking at that number, but along the way, and how do you adjust? All of this, again, when I think about the student work, it gives me goosebumps, because then we can allow that student to, again, go back to being a part of that math community, owning the parts that you have shown proficiency with, and helping them to really improve and know that you're there to help them through that. So that's what we're doing in mathematics, and I'm going to turn it over now back to Dr. Bailey.
And I just want to certainly pause at this point for any questions that you may have. We certainly have a lengthy presentation today, and so in the event that we need to break, this would be a good time to facilitate any questions that you may have at this time.
Okay, Ms. Basine.
In regard to the achievement gap, so I'm going back to the beginning part of your presentation, we've talked about this a little bit, but is it possible, if the board agrees, you know, to do a more in-depth analysis, looking at standard mean differences, or using other metrics to really look at what the achievement gaps are really telling us? And also, how do these achievement gaps compare to the state? I know we'll be able to kind of glean some of that once those come out. But I'd also like to see, you know, we talked about the racial achievement gap, but can we look at also in-depth our students with disabilities as compared to our non-disabled peers, to their non-disabled peers? And I'd like to see that as well, and kind of delve more into that in addressing it, because it has been flat for the last three years, but it's been flat for much longer than that. So I think we could get more into it to get, draw deeper conclusions. I thought the content presentations was really helpful. I have a lot of questions around that, and Dr. Gabriel, I don't know how you want us to address those, because I know some of us probably could have, spend a lot of time on questions, but I, I do have a... But I, I do have a, a number of them if.
Why don't you start with a few and then we'll go around the room and see if others have any questions?
Okay. So we'll start with math, because you know, we did see a decline there. Did you notice any trends? So if I understood correctly, so the assessment this past school year was based on the 2009 standards. Although they were taught 2009 and 2016, correct?
Yes.
Do you find in these crosswalk years that school divisions typically see a decline? And are we seeing that trend in other divisions as well?
So from the preliminary, from what I see on VDOE, there have been some declines in the other districts as well, yes.
Alright. Do you find that in schools that have, or that are using departmentalization, that their scores are stronger than schools that may not?
I could give you a better solid number. I will tell you from the, we did look at that, began to look at that last year. However, some of the schools that were doing the departmentalization were doing it because in some cases, they were long-term substitutes. And the support would be better, more plentiful, I will say, when it was just one person that they would need that support. So I, I wouldn't be able to give a definitive answer because of that reason.
And if I could add one other piece to that, departmentalization, that's again utilized at the elementary level. What you would see at secondary that there's a teacher or a couple of teachers who teach mathematics. The other key component that's important for that to be successful is that the person who is teaching the content in a departmentalized method certainly has the, the skill set to deliver well. Because too often, schools will adopt departmentalization because they see results that are happening in other schools. But yet they don't necessarily have the strengths of, the teaching strength of those folks, the content strength. And so it's just a different way and we're saying results. And so you always have to look at who's teaching in the department model to make sure that you're going to get the, the best results. Because sometimes we've seen, and not just saying in Norfolk's data, but across the country, that you'll see one teacher teaching all entire grade level, which means you end up with a gap for those students when they go to the next grade, because there's been such a deficit in the delivery of the instruction. So that's something we pay attention to also.
And my, the last one I'll ask for now is related to the specialists. So if I heard correctly, I think you mentioned fourteen of them have less than three years' experience, or in the, in English? Did I hear that correctly?
Yep, you heard that correctly. And we've put some things in place to build their capacity. So for instance, we have a monthly meeting with all of the specialists. And then we have a second date each month, that's just for those fourteen specialists. Yesterday was that day, we had to kind of do, our regular monthly meeting was the week before. So we had, it was canceled due to Florence, so we split the day. So that all of the reading specialists were together in the morning. And then the fourteen with less than three years' experience stayed in the afternoon. And we dug deep into PALS and what that assessment, how to give the assessment, make sure they had all the tools to do that. And then how to support their teachers once they have that data to be able to make reading groups. And that goes back to that whole stages of literacy development and where our students are. And, and that was kind of our starting point there with them was that and just to make sure that they had those tools. Because the PALS window opened Monday.
And are they part of, are they part of the ODU cohort or is this a separate group of?
They already have their, we do not have an ODU cohort with reading specialists. They have their reading degrees.
They have their specialties.
And as Rhonda said, out of the fourteen, six are brand new reading specialists. Some are fresh out of the classroom. We have one that is out of state, or actually two that have come out of state. So I'm, you know, knowing that there are, you know, so many new ones. But I'm also very excited because, you know, the last few years, we've had many vacancies with our reading specialists. And so I feel like now we're in a very good place with having them filled. So that, and so I'm, we have one vacancy right now, so.
And math is the same way. We have one vacancy and this is the first time in years that we have been that close to being fully staffed.
Exciting.
Yes, that's great.
Thanks to HR.
Thank you, HR. And we had some come back from other. They left and.
Yeah, grass wasn't greener after all.
That's right.
Okay, Ms. Camson?
First of all, excellent presentation. Excellent, I have a really good overview of exactly what your goal is and what you're putting into the schools. You all did a great job. My question has to do with implementation, the deep implementation. This plan is wonderful. How are you monitoring that deep implementation? We all know change is hard.
Right.
Yeah, we've all been there and that's a constant, constant battle. For you think you've got it and then you have turnovers of staff. What are you doing to address, because we did see the scores are flat.
Right.
Which is disappointing because obviously you've got a great plan in place. What are you doing to address that? Because we need to see an upper tick. It looks like from what you're saying that the, the testing, the new testing that's coming out in nineteen and, nineteen and twenty.
Right.
Are not going to be the huge changes that we've had in the past with the last rollout where that was totally changed. This looks like more of an adjustment and a cleanup. So that's good news. But what are you doing, when we, it's, it's time to start seeing that line go up and those gaps stop closing.
For the, for reading or for English, we have, you know, one of the things that we try to do all the time to monitor that is do walkthroughs in our buildings. And so when my team goes in to do a walkthrough, we always leave a teacher a positive note. But then we can get a grasp of, you know, what's, are they starting to implement gradual release in their classroom during the English block? Are we seeing, you know, the teacher doing all the work? Or, you know, the teacher does the work and then they have the student do it independently and there's not that middle piece? And so that helps us figure out what does this school need to address those issues and kind of determine. But, and, and I know that, you know, yes, the data in some places, it is flat. But it's also, in my three years in this job, we have had a high turnover of teachers. And so sometimes worse, we go into a building where we have, you know, seventy-five percent of the staff has less than three years' experience. And so to me, reading is this huge elephant to learn how to teach it well and it takes time. And so they're building that craft. So, you know, that's one of the reasons why we started to focus, let's pick guided reading as something that we are going to focus on. And make sure that a lot of other stuff is not going on during a guided reading group, but actual reading is going on during that reading group. And the teacher is guiding students through that process. And so for us, it's that, doing those walkthroughs, keeping, you know, tabs on the data and looking at the data, triangulating the data. When we had those core content rotations with principals, we were able to, you know, the principals would bring some of their data and then I had analyzed their data as well. And I maybe had looked at it, triangulated it a little bit differently, so we could come up with a plan. Okay, what do we need to do next to start to see this growth and, and to move the, the needle up?
Do you do things like narrow lens walkthroughs when you're doing those?
Definitely, definitely.
So that you're focusing on, and do you make those unique to the school that you're in after reviewing their data?
Yes, and I, you know.
Do you feel like you're kind of scratching your head because you have such a great plan and your data seems so flat?
But I am.
Let me, if I could inter, inter, interject also as it relates to the, the plans. Again, these have been developed over three years. They're at a probably a first level of maturation for the eighteen, nineteen school year. So we've been building these plans to get to this point for that level of readiness, along with the professional development. So I agree, you know, our anticipation is that we will begin to see some greater movement. Because now we have the, the deeper and probably the fuller complement of the plan in place such that we can go forward. But we've been developing the plan and working the plan at the same time. Now, we're at that point, I think, of that deeper implementation because we have the core structures in place.
I know, I, I'm going to share something that happened at my reading meeting yesterday that I thought was powerful for all of our specialists to hear. One school that had been analyzing their data and they realized, like when I said, we looked at the big three and drawing conclusions was something that came up. So they have their smarty goal that they developed over last year or the year before, along with their instructional focus, which we've been working through with focused schools. And they had this aha moment from their data to say, okay, you know, we've gotten questioning down. We're, we see growth in that, in how our students are understanding how to question things, how to ask questions. I mean, it seems like that should not be a hard thing for our kids to do. But the person who's asking the questions when they're reading is the person who's making meaning. And that's what we need our students to do, not the teachers to ask the questions. And so they noticed that, okay, our questioning is going up, but drawing conclusions has, is dipping. That now is going to become our focus. So really thinking about how they're going to respond to the data to make instructional decisions. And as Rhonda said, you know, one of the things we did at the meeting was we looked at, this is what the district by question report looks like. We gave all of the specialists their question, their school-based question reports. And they were able to look at both of those and kind of make some reflection on what they were seeing. And then we could work in teams to say, okay, what, what's next? Now what should we be focusing on? So, you know, I, I do, I think that for, for reading, I'm hoping for, you know, smaller incremental changes, growth. Because I get worried if we grow too much at once, that it, you know, is it that cohort of students or reading takes time?
And for math, the unpacking of the standards, the planning, that's going to be key. Making sure that the teachers understand what the new standards entail. We cannot take it for granted. Yesterday, I had a specialist in a building and she told me that they were working on building an assessment. And they were, they were halfway through the assessment and then one person said, wait a minute, that's not what the new standard says. That's not what the framework says. So we need those ahas to occur now while you're still planning before the end of the year when we see the results. So that's what's, we're, we're putting our time and effort into really being present during those plannings. Making sure those plannings have the correct documents in place. And we did a walkthrough of plannings last year at one of our high schools. We found that they didn't have the things in place. We made some adjustments, we did some lesson studies and they were one of the schools, one of the secondary schools that did have improvements, especially in algebra. So they stood out to me and to me, that stood out because of the work that we did with the planning, the curriculum, the lesson study. We changed their pedagogy, we also deepened their content. So that's where we're going with it.
Okay, because that's the concern I have. Because I, I know you don't want to go too fast. It seems like, however, you know, the clock's ticking on the lives of the children. And they can't wait three and four and five and six years, you know.
Well, I would never expect our students to wait that long to build a proficient reader, but it does take time.
And I would also add that, again, with mathematics, the power of beginning the instruction in the 2016 standards for K2 is, is a readiness strategy. In terms of students who now are third graders will have had some initial exposure to those 2016 standards. Rather than, and it was a great time to do it because that's not an assessment year. So now they go in at a different place than perhaps it happened the last time the standards were changed in math. And so that was, as we talk about the three facets of our curriculum and instruction and our work, that was a strategic decision to get students ready and to give them more time in those 2016 standards to the point that they will be assessed.
Thank you ladies, that was very helpful.
Did anybody else have a question?
Question, just a comment. I also enjoyed the presentations and I know this is one of many that we will receive. I always think it's important for us to begin the process with saying, from a board perspective, you know, what do we do to support? So, you know, recall when we offered support for this process. But if there are things that we should be considering from a board perspective to support the work or if there are things that we feel we need to, that aren't working, that we need to adjust. Having something in the process where you begin to address those things from the, from the board level.
Every time, Mr. Drummond, we are looking at the agenda and we're looking at the topics, the question that we ask intentionally is, is there a policy change? Is there a budget implication? Is there a something? And now we're taking it to the next level as we're working on the accountability plan that we need to think of as we do this work. Because as we know right now, time is escaping us. And we want to make the most of the time that you all are providing and the presentation that you're giving. So since we are talking with time, let me just quickly make a few points. The literary PD that took place over the summer, I heard very, very positive responses to that. And I did not realize that they came in on their own. Our teachers do so much. And just hearing all of the different content areas that they have to specialize in, we might as well just call them professors. Because there's so much that they have to stay current with. But do they get credit towards this professional development? Okay, great, so they're getting some type of reward for it and credit for it. With regard to analyzing the data, the data that does come from assessments that are done, whether they be on the computer or in the classroom. Do you feel that you're, you're able to, with what we have right now with our Department of Accountability and Assessment, to get that back to you so that you can then translate it to building level and help determine where areas need to be? The glows and grows, which I love that term, by the way, the glow, you know, where, where do you need to have focus?
Definitely.
Okay.
We work very well with ARA and they get us data immediately. We look at the numbers, we do an analysis and we get into schools, so it's been very helpful.
Okay, great. So then, in looking at the time, I'm going to ask the board to consider allowing us to spend the next fifteen minutes or so on this presentation and then to move our policy discussion to the formal meeting. If you all are okay with that. Do I have any objections to that? Were there any board members that had questions specifically on the policies that we were going to consider?
Well, that's, that's what the discussion is for, is to see if other board members have questions. We do, we do want to go over a few policies. You know, we have, I think, thirty-nine of them. And there's a couple that we want to highlight, but a lot of them, majority of them are all updates, you know, based on amendments to the state code and legal references. But I just, you know, we wanted to highlight a couple of them, two new policies, just to make the board fully aware of, of what and why they're in place.
So I think that maybe we can move that then to a formal meeting for the discussion. Then before we, before we go into vote for them. So we can have that full discussion, answer any questions, allow you guys to present them, so that we can spend a little bit more time in this presentation. Are you all okay with that? Uh, let's see here. Yes, and then we'll just pull them, yeah, let's see.
Madam Chair, the, the one thing, I, I guess, because we typically do the policy adoption.
As a consent.
As a consent, yeah.
Right, so we would need to.
Yeah, we would need to do that.
So we can do that then.
And we do.
Motion to remove the item from the consent agenda.
Motion to remove the item from the consent agenda before approved, and then do the approval at the end of the consent, at the end of the discussion.
At the end of the discussion.
But we would need to adopt them.
At the end of the discussion.
At the end, okay. I just want to be sure that we're not moving.
Just, just, you know, motion to, or statement, whichever way we do, to remove that, the policy from the consent agenda to allow the discussion and then a vote.
And then a vote later, okay.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Gabrielle and members of the board. This next portion of our presentation certainly goes back to our two accountability methodologies, our federal and state accountability. And one of the measures that's in that is our graduation measures. There are three different measures. And so I felt at this particular time that we would share with you what those three measures are, a little bit of data. And then what we plan to do is to share a little more in-depth information during the October 3rd work session. So we have the Virginia on time, you can keep it there, we have the Virginia on time, we have the federal graduation indicator, which is ESSA. We have the graduation completion index, which is part of our accreditation, and then certainly Virginia on time. And so there are time periods when this will be made available to us. This is just a quick snapshot so that you could see what's included in one and what's not included. Certainly, there'll be variations then in the rates that you see. Okay. So as we move forward, this is just a preliminary view of the rates. And the on-time rate will be released October 1st. Those are the rates by high school, and then there's a district rate. The preliminary graduation completion index is due to be released next week as part of the accreditation, release of information. You can see that there's a district rate there, and that is something that we calculate because districts are not accredited. Okay. Then there's the federal graduation indicator. What is important to note is that particular indicator is a year behind. So I felt it would be really inappropriate to share the 2017 data. And so what has been indicated by VDOE is that they're going to catch that particular measure up so that we'll have current, current, current information to compare. So you can see that the rates are different, different formulas. And so, however, they serve different purposes. Moving on. No Child Left Behind, the, the new title is Every Student Succeeds Act. Most of us are familiar with NCLB and AYP and AMO. Now it's just ESSA. And ESSA has a different criteria, federal criteria, as they review the data. Certainly, it pertains only to Title I schools. And so based on a percentage of achievement or lack of achievement, there are two categories in which schools could fall in to the comprehensive support and improvement, targeted support and improvement. That information will be announced next week, and we will get, as data becomes available to us, we will share that with you prior to that date. In the federal accountability indicators, there's two major groups. Academic indicators, which look at pass rates based on the ESSA formula. They do look at growth in reading and mathematics, however, it's not a main factor. They look at high school graduation rate and then progress in English learners. The other indicators are chronic absenteeism and school accreditation ratings. So those are the items that they look at. Once a school has been identified, they look at multiple measures because there could be schools that have the same pass rate, and so how do we, like, break that tie? So they'll look at multiple measures of that. Also, it is important to note, as we go to the next slide, they have created long-term goals and internal measures of progress. And so what I attached to board docs as part of this presentation was the federal accountability guidelines. And it does have like a definition of terms in that document, but it also has a schedule, if you will, or a matrix of benchmarks per reading and math and some of the other areas. So as we go to the next slide, this is just a brief illustration of the targets that they have set. And so they have elected to align their targets with the Virginia State targets, which is 75% or more passing in reading, 70% or more passing in math, and 84% graduation target. So as you can see, we have, we commonly will talk about the assessment year and then the accountability year. So the assessment year for us would have been 2017-18. The accountability year is 2018-19. Okay. And so those are the targets that they are looking at to determine then how do our schools fall within those that are identified as Title I. And so they have outlined it to seven years from now. So, you know, when we start talking about targets, I think that they wanted to move away from the original goal of NCLB and to align, try to align the two accountability methodologies. Okay. The other areas are EL, progress targets, you can see those, chronic absenteeism targets. Normally, in NCLB, they looked at the average daily attendance, and so now they have changed that now to chronic absenteeism. The participation rate initially was 70, 95%, and it still is 95%. For most of our schools, we have 99% or 100% participation in the SOL assessments. Now we'll just briefly go over the comparison of calculations, and this is just going to provide a little bit more in-depth information about how we calculate the accreditation rates and then the ESSA rates. Sometimes, you know, I talk with individuals, principals, and school personnel because they try to anticipate what their rate, pass rates are going to be. So there are, it's formula-driven, but there are a lot of ins and outs of that. And so I will turn it over to Ms. McGarrett to briefly take us through that.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bailey. So just real quick to go through, as Dr. Bailey mentioned, there are the two rates, there are things that are aligned between the two systems, between the state accreditation system, which is going to be listed on the left of the table, and on the right of the table is going to be the federal ESSA calculations or pieces included within that system. Some are very similar, and even if the outcomes are intended to be the same, there is very much a different set of students or calculation given for each system. So that's why sometimes numbers will look different coming from, depending on which way they're coming in. At the top of this table, you'll see that this is about who is included in groups of, within a calculation. So if we're looking at pass rates for grades three through eight.
Go back.
There we go. Okay. Basically, those are going to be the same for state accreditation and federal ESSA. It's going to include all three eighth students who took a test within that year in that area. So every third through eighth grader who took a reading SOL test, both system, that's going to include, and across the school year. And we have the full year, not because we're testing elementary students in the summer, but because we do have different middle schoolers and different things that are going on throughout the year. Majority of it is just when it naturally happens, which is majority of, in the spring for the younger kiddos. The second piece, though, there is a big difference between the state accreditation on the left and the S, and ESSA, where 912, it is just like the younger kids, where they are, the tests that are taken that year is what's included in the calculation for state accreditation ratings and combined rates, or not, and then also the pass rates for math. For the ESSA, it is a cohort model. So it is taking that federal graduation indicator model and taking that set of kids who are graduating and looking back across their high school lifetime and picking up tests and then calculating that way. This is a very different spread in the way this is looked at and calculated. Again, state accreditation, real time, happened that year. The other one is, again, looking back across the four-year cohort to say, all right, let me go grab a kid's math test from three years ago, let me go grab their science test, that kind of thing. So that is a big difference. It does not include the dropouts or the long-term absences. The next piece is that for state accreditation, it's going to include SOL, VAP, VSAP, and substitute test takers. VSAP, the last year for VSAP was last year. As of this year, it is no longer available. It was something that was available for students with disabilities in the high school level, but this piece is, has been eliminated by VDOE. That, so moving forward, it'll be SOL, VAP, and substitute test takers only. On the federal ESSA side, we only include in those calculations SOL test takers and VAP test takers. VAP is a, we hear a lot, a lot about SOLs, but VAP is first, is the Virginia Alternate Assessment Program, and this is a portfolio-based assessment for our students with the most significant disabilities and the cognitive disabilities in our district. So those are all calculated together, they are one-for-one and included. The next piece is the English learner's progress. We have that on both sides. It is used a little bit differently. It is a separate indicator for ESSA. It is included within our combined rates for stated accreditation. For state accreditation, who's included, grades three through 12. So they will look access year, test year, to the next access test year, if they took it somewhere in Virginia. For federal, they are looking K-12. So every single student, and again, that is a separate indicator, and it's going to be, they have to have two years of an assessment to be able to make that progress, or to look at the progress. And the last piece is chronic absenteeism is in both. It includes K-12 on both systems, and it is also going to be, it is a separate indicator as well. Those are calculated exactly the same as well. So real quick, for pass rates, Dr. Bailey went through some of these, adjust, the top two are adjustments that we talked about earlier on, where that failing retest in both are not included. So again, each kid has one test, or if they were only a retest, it's eliminated if it's a failed attempt. Recovery is in for one, for state, and it is out for ESSA. So again, that's going to create a difference in calculations. The transfer dates that eliminate students from a calculation if they failed are completely different. 20th instructional day for state assessments, after that, they are eliminated if they are a failed attempt. If it is in ESSA, they are only counting students in who are enrolled in the school for 50% of the school year or more. So that is a very different spread as well. The biggest piece at the bottom is that in the state accreditation, pass rates in the, and actually, this is really the combined, what makes the combined rate, is that who is in the numerator to be calculated to gain, what is your combined rate, is going to be students who pass their assessment either at proficient or past advanced, students who showed growth according to the progress tables that were given to us by VDOE. So there, all the psychometricians behind that looked at the assessments, which, what scores fell into what levels of understanding and mastery of the standards of learning. So if they meet the criteria for growth, then they are included in the numerator as well. The last piece are students showing EL progress. So this is where that big difference is. It is not a separate indicator for accreditation, but it, as it is for ESSA. So with the students with EL progress, if they have made progress, then they are actually included just in the area of English three, or four 12, excuse me, they are included in that numerator. This is essentially a continuum that they go down. So a student cannot pass but also show growth and be an EL student and have growth there and be a three-pointer. So basically, they'll work their way down this list when they're determining if it will be, the student will be included in the numerator. Federal ESSA, it is only pass and fail. So basically, they're going to look at who's in the numerator, is going to be students who pass SOL tests, either at advanced or proficient. There's nothing about growth or those kinds of things included. The next piece is substitute tests, just to kind of touch on that real quick, is that what that is, is the state, the state board has approved certain assessments that can be given in lieu of an SOL test. They basically meet the same level of rigor, same level of content, those kinds of things. So an example of that would be work keys for business writing can be substituted in for a writing SOL. If a student does that and passes the work keys assessment, then they are counted as a pass in, for the SOL test. They also earn their verified credits and all of those things. So we do have a lot of students who we use this and that we kind of, every content area has one. Only, the only thing that is included in ESSA for substitute tests are the ones, the few that you see here, but they are also considering Algebra II and Geometry, a substitute test for our advanced students. So a stu, because they're looking at Algebra for math. So math is set up a little bit differently, and they pull in these for any of our advanced students, they start looking at those other areas, and we're able to use those as a passing test for ESSA as well. So that's a waiver that was provided for us. So that is the only thing available in ESSA for substitute assessments. For graduation, there's the GCI that Dr. Bailey was talking about, and then federal for ESSA is the FGI. So that list of the three different types, these are the two for accreditation as well for ESSA. Those are the, what is included, what is not. And then for graduation, it is current year for state accreditation, and then for ESSA, we're still lagging that one year until we hit next year, at the end of next year, then we will be live for the one year on time. So they will be one-for-one versus lagging. The number of students that are included, this gets a little tricky and has been tricky for a lot of, especially for the achievement gap groups. Basically, with VDOE, it's, it needs to be 30 to be statistically significant, and so they will include that. Recovery tests don't count when you're figuring out if you have a small n or not. So that is pulled out. So, and then ESSA, again, too small, if your three year is too small, they don't even look at it. There's a note at the bottom of this slide, because again, like I said, it does get kind of tricky with the state accreditation, where if, it depends really on if you have 30 students in your three-year average, but your, your combined rate is less than 65, you're eliminated, eliminated. That doesn't activate for that school. That considers it too small. Otherwise, they're included in for consideration towards accreditation and that kind of thing with those sets of indicators.
And they do reflect at the district level?
Yes. Yep. So the last piece for state accreditation and the federal ESSA piece, and I think one of the biggest ones, and it actually, to me, is very exciting, probably more exciting than we would all want to say, but it is very exciting, is the safe harbor provision. This is one of the biggest pieces, that a school is given credit for all of the work and time that it takes for the teachers and the students to reduce their failure rate by more than 10%. If they are able to do this and they've at least earned a 50% combined rate, they are rewarded in a sense where they are moved up within the level of the indicator. So in the area of math, say they get to level two, but that's been a huge, more than 10% reduction in the failure rate, they will move them up to level one. So, because there is a lot of work that goes into reducing a failure rate in that way. So, and that's why I feel like that's very exciting. ESSA does not have that provision built in at all. You're where you are. No participation for state. Federal, just like Dr. Bailey was talking about, that still has that 95% and that kind of thing. And so, again, those notes at the bottom kind of define things a little bit more. And those, those are kind of the hot topic similarities and differences between the two systems that are important.
Well, thank you, Ms. McGarrett. And so, you know, we're at the, the end of our presentation for today. Certainly, growth matters, and so with the combined rate, that allows for our schools to analyze and plan for all subgroups with some numbers attached to then allow them to then create SMARTY goals accordingly. And so.
So to follow up on that then, we have plans in place, we have nearly all staff positions filled. What are the measures that we are setting for this year to attain for our math and reading goals?
Well, certainly, right off the bat, our goals are similar to the targets that have been set by state and federal.
Okay.
But we do have several schools, numerous schools, that exceed the state benchmarks. And so what our schools are doing is looking at their data individually and creating SMARTY goals. For the district as a whole, certainly, we have the School Board Accountability Plan where we have benchmarked out the data and indicate what would be reasonable increase each year. And so as part of your discussion, when the time comes, we'll take a look at that and identify what the new targets may be, if you want to exceed past what the state and federal have set.
Thank you, okay. Any other questions for the presentation? Okay, well, thank you very much, sorry that we went over time, but this is definitely a worthwhile discussion to have, and I really appreciate the content coordinators and especially everyone being here to add to the substance of the presentation. Thank you very much, thank you, Dr. Boone. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So that being said, we're going to go ahead and move into our closed session while we transition. Does anybody need a break, a little five, five-minute break or so?
Do the motion first?
Yeah.
Well-
Yeah, we can do the motion. Is there a, a motion that we go into closed session?
Move that we go into closed session?
All right, move.
A second, that.
Second, Mr. Butts, do you mind calling?
Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes where our sound off in subsection A and section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees in local public schools pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the motion concerns a monthly personnel docket and the board's review of the performance of specific personnel in connection with the inadverting release of the public of unredacted copies of the school board crisis plan. The discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in local public schools that would involve the disclosure of information containing a scholastic record pursuant to subsection two of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the motion concerns a monthly student support docket and the board's review of the status of, of, and actions taken towards a specific student. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring provision of legal counsel advised by counsel. Pursuant to subsection seven and eight of the above cited code section, the subject of this section of the motion refers to consultation and briefings regarding the matters settled in subsection A and B of the motion and the informing the boards regarding the specific-